Well, let's go ahead then.
All right.
Good evening, community of Stateon, friends and neighbors, councilors and staff. It is the fifteenth of March, the Ides of March in the year of the common era 2021. And we are here for a public meeting of the State and City Council. Meeting is called to order, and Alyssa, you pull the levers and listen to those public comments.
Sure. So first up was going to be Jack Burnett, but it sounds like he's not going to be able to make it tonight. So second on our list was Amy. And we'll give her a chance to pop on. And Amy, if you can just state your name and address for the record, and then we'll start the timer for you.
Sure, yeah. As you can see, my son named me here, so sorry about that. My name is Amy Sutkus, and I live at 058 Barbara Lane, Omsville. And I'm just going to read a letter that I sent. I emailed you a little bit earlier today in support of the pool, parks, and library. So can I just go ahead? Are we good to go?
Yes.
Yep, okay. So I'm writing in support of the pool, parks, and library levies, and about what will happen if these levies do not pass. I'm a family doctor. My husband is an engineer. We live near Sublimity, have two children ages nine and eleven. My daughter is in the background here. She's the nine-year-old who attends Sublimity School. We are just one family of many in this community who have been, whose lives have been really enriched by our pool, library, and parks. We moved here in 2011. In the toddler years, my kids played and made friends at Parks and Stateon. You cannot put a price on this. They loved story hour at the library with Miss Castle. They admired the artwork displayed at the library and learned about reptiles with a hands-on demonstration. They went to swim lessons at the pool, advancing from beginners to the swim team. My daughter's preschool photo was on the covered bridge. I participated in the State and Triathlon. My husband and I regularly lap swim, and I helped coach the State and Manta Rays. We moved, we tried out movie nights in the pool. Who knew you could bob around in the water while watching Coco? That was an experience. It was all free or cheap and all invaluable. So what will it look like if these levies do not pass? We are experiencing this now, actually, with the pool closed indefinitely. The State and Manta Ray Swim Team is disbanded, with talented athletes now on teams in Corvallis and Salem. A little piece of community pride has gone with them, as they represent those communities rather than our own. High school teams from Stateon and Cascade will be unable to practice. Swim times for seniors and other adults are not happening. Some of us are swimming in Silverton or elsewhere. You might ask whether this stuff matters. Maybe it's a no-brainer, but I'm here to say that it does matter very much. The pool was a big reason we chose to move here. People are living here, growing up here, and becoming good and resilient people because of a community that cares about each other. The pool, parks, and library are an important part of this. They keep us strong and they keep us healthy. One of the most important things in life is connecting and caring for others. It is not a stretch to say that the library, parks, and pool in our community are directly tied to this. I urge you to promote the levies in the community and to give people good reasons for why the pool, parks, and library are important to our community. Should the levies fail, I hope you will stretch to find resources to support both short- and long-term planning for these community necessities. Thank you so much for letting me say that.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Okay. Alyssa, who's next? Where'd she go?
I'm sorry. She was like right on the money there with timing, so I was trying to stop my alarm. So next up, we have Jordan Lambert. There he is. Go ahead and introduce yourself and name and address, Jordan, and we'll start the timer once you're done with that part.
Cool. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Staff. My name is Jordan Lambert. I live at 1155 Highland Drive here in Stateon. And I completely agree with what was said before. This is going to be a little bit more harsh than that, but I'm glad that that was the first thing. I'm just going to read what I have here. This last year and voting cycle combined has been eye-opening and concerning to myself, many others, and I'm sure some of you. First with the COVID situation starting a little over a year ago, the fires that impacted this area, and then most recently, the ice apocalypse of which many of us, myself included, were personally impacted. With all of this comes stress, and that is very understandable. And I don't pretend to have all the answers, but want to be the voice of many that I've spoken to in our city. The issue and thoughts I would like to bring to you tonight are surrounding the library, the pool, and the levy, like before. And that was the levy that was sadly not renewed on this last ballot, which I was in supportive and still am with some caveats. The first concern I have is with how the levy was described on the ballot. It needs to be made more clear that it is a renewal and what it is actually for. I wasn't aware that it was a renewal or what it was for until reaching out to Councilor Patty for clarification. You've stated in your meetings that you sought legal counsel on this, and were told that you couldn't clarify any further. But I think that the mayor needs to seek a second opinion or get different legal counsel regarding this. And in addition, the levy needs to be made a little bit more publicized before people see it on the ballot. Splitting the levy up on the ballot was discussed, and if clarification isn't made, I fear the confusion is just going to be greater. My final and greatest concern regarding this levy is the fact that neither the library or the pool has been open to the public for nearly a year. I understand that there are some fears regarding the pandemic, and some of those are very legitimate. We now know a lot more about the virus. There's a vaccine available to those that desire it, and we know how to prevent the spread. It has been stated that the library is providing some services curbside, but this isn't making the library open. The public perception is that the staff is not afraid of the virus but doesn't want to go back to work after having a year off. It is time to start opening up these services, overfunding them, and if we don't, there's most likely going to be very little support of passing this levy. I personally have a very hard time voting yes on this if things remain closed much longer. And I was very in supportive at the last few cycles. It's the duty of the mayor, city council, and city staff to steward these funds well. And if these services remain closed, then myself and many in our community are going to have a hard decision to make filling out our ballots. And I'd find it sad to see both of these services closed down indefinitely, but can't support continuing to fund them if they remain closed as they have this last year with no planned reopening date. I understand that these things are hard to hear because they're hard things for me to say, but I'm concerned, and many that I've spoken to share the same concerns. Thank you for your time and this opportunity to speak. Thank you for your ongoing service to our community. And if anyone has any questions or wants clarification, feel free to reach out to me anytime. I'm happy to have a conversation, hear your thoughts, and offer honest feedback.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lambert.
Thank you, Jordan.
No problem.
Alyssa?
Yes. Next up is Mary Ann. Have her pop back on here. Let's see, where is she? She's here. Let me send her something to start her video. There she is. Hi, Mary Ann.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record, and I'll start your timer once you're done with that.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Porter and the members of the council. My name is Mary Ann McKenzie, and I live at 2201 Equestrian Loop South in Salem, Oregon. I'm in front of you today to express my support and the importance of the levy passing. I had been, I was the head coach of the State and Manta Rays before the pool closed. And I had been traveling back and forth from Salem to Stateon to support this team and to support these kids that were so willing to come to our team and learn how to swim and also continue in the sport with having athletes and such and winning medals and ribbons. Swimming is such a great exercise for these kids and the importance of knowing how to swim, especially in Oregon. State and Communities pools provide services to others in the surrounding cities, just not in Stateon, that those that can afford to basically drive to Salem, Corvallis, or Albany, which are now the only towns that have a pool for lessons and swim teams. I hope you will provide communications to your community about the importance of keeping the pool funded. And on a personal note, I became the head coach of this team because of the kids. The kids are so important and how they light up with their eyes when they learn how to dive for the first time or they learn how to do their stroke correctly the first time, or they beat one of their friends on their swim team. It's something that you can't get back when you lose a pool like this. And unfortunately, many pools are closing, and I hope that you will make sure that your pool stays open. They're also conquering their fear of water. Some of them have come into this pool, and they never wanted to swim. They never wanted to touch the water. But they conquered that fear with all of the lifeguards and the swim lessons and people supporting them about how fun being in the water is and how safe it can be if they know what they're doing. I also love being, having the coach and swimmer relationship and being a support for them during their swimming seasons. There are so many things that this pool has taught these kids, and I hope that you've realized the importance of the pool and keep the funding going. Thank you for your time, and I hope to see that the levy passes.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right.
Yes, all right. Our final public comment is Mary Wallace. And Mary, same thing. State your name and your address for the record, and I will start your timer.
Good evening. I'm Mary Wallace. I live at 643 Meadow Brook Lane here in Stateon. The pool has been an integral part of my life ever since moving to Stateon about 12 years ago. I helped start the Friends of the Pool group 11 years ago, and we have purchased a lift chair, drinking fountain, scoreboard, pool vacuum, and exercise equipment for the pool. The local Kiwanis Club pays for swimming lessons for third graders at no cost to their parents and enhancing the school curriculum. I have watched as our exercise classes attendance has grown from about 40 or 50 people across a four-period class to over 100 each day before COVID hit. The pool was a major factor for me in rehabilitation after shoulder surgery six and a half years ago. Having the pool closed most of the past year is having an impact on my health, as balance and flexibility are so important as I age. We have an amazing library and park system for a town our size. All these assets bring our neighbors from Mill City, Lyons, Syle, Sublimity, Omsville, and Turner into our community, where they then shop, buy gas, or eat out. These features are what makes Stateon such a desirable place to live. I'm hoping that the voters will see that these amenities enrich all of our lives and that both levies will pass with a wide majority. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Mary. Appreciate that. Does everyone on that pool committee and patrons of the pool, do they know that that pool was initially built to teach water safety to kids? That was the, that was the express intent of it. And I hope we've carried that on for 40 years plus. But it's neat to see it appreciated and repeated. Thank you, Mary. Okay. Is there any others, Alyssa?
No, that was it.
Okay, all right. Well, let's go to our regular meeting then. The consent agenda for, and a big thanks to everyone that came and testified this evening. Let's see, consent agenda for March 1st. Okay. What would you folks like to do with that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor.
I moved that we approved the consent agenda as presented.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The Councilor Hook, I second.
Oh, thank you, Councilor. A second. And Alyssa, would you go ahead and poll the council on this, please?
Sure. Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
And Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, folks. First big item of business this evening is a public hearing for a zone map amendment at 1973 Pacific Court. And I have to read a long-winded introduction, so bear with me a little bit here. Good evening. My name is Henry Porter. I'm the mayor of Stateon, and will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the city council's public hearing in the matter of land use filed number 1-01/21, an application for a zoning map amendment. The applicant requests that the property at 1973 Pacific Court be changed from light industrial to industrial commercial. This hearing is now open. Oregon land use law requires a statement be made to those in attendance that covers certain matters relative to this case. Zone map amended applications are required to satisfy approval criteria contained within the State Municipal Code number 17.12.180.6. All testimony, arguments, and evidence received during this public hearing must be directed toward these approval criteria or to such other rule, law, regulation, or policy which you believe apply to this case. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by this body, they must formally be placed in the record in this proceeding. To do that either before or after you speak, please submit them electronically to the planning staff. An issue may arise, excuse me, an issue which may be the basis for an appeal to LUBA, which is the Land Use Board of Appeals, shall be raised not later than the close of the record following the final evidentiary hearing in this case. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity. Yeah, this is not good. Specific, specific, specifically, here we go. Let's use that. So as to afford this body and the parties to this hearing an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Prior to the conclusion of this hearing, any person may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application involved here. Continuances may take the form of holding an additional public hearing with oral testimony allowed or may consist of holding the evidentiary record open for a period of time designated by the city for submittal from the public of written evidence. At this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was provided in this case. I hear none. The jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case. I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex-party contact, or bias by any members of the council? And I hear none. If you are providing testimony during the public hearing, please state your name and address for the record. As a participant in the hearing, the city is required to notify you of the final results of the process. We are now ready for the staff introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Fleishman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as that self-described long-winded introduction said, what is before you this evening is a public hearing on a application to change the zoning for a piece of property from light industrial to industrial commercial. Your packet has in the staff report a aerial photo that shows the property outlined. And with that, I will turn it over to the applicant to present the application, and then I will be back with the staff report.
Thank you, Dan, and good evening, everybody. My name is Jeff Frost. I'm a land use and urban planning consultant here on behalf of the applicant this evening. My office address is 1720 Liberty Street, Southeast Salem, 97302. The applicant is G's Properties LLC. The principal of G's Properties LLC is also online with us this evening, and his name is Izam Bayan, and he'll be able to answer questions if you have any that I may not be able to answer. So thank you for holding the hearing this evening. As has already been introduced, this is a request for a zone change for a single property at 1973 Pacific Court. It's currently zoned IL, and the property owner wishes to change the zoning to IC. Now, the comp plan designation, the comprehensive plan designation for this property is industrial, and both of those zones are included under that classification. They're both industrial zones. So the comp plan does not change. In this case, only the zone. Pardon me. The difference between those two zones is primarily the types of uses that are allowed. They share many types of uses in common, but there are some differences between what those two zones allow. But it's all within the industrial category as that is set forth by the comprehensive plan. The comp plan also shows there's a substantial amount of land in the city that is already zoned IL, but very little land that is zoned IC. So most likely, as time goes by, almost any proposal that might come along that would require the IC zone would have to go through a similar zone change proceeding because there's just not much land that is zoned in that category. I believe it's something approximating 82 acres are currently zoned IL, but only three acres or three and a half acres are currently zoned IC. So there's an imbalance between land that's zoned IL and IC, which is not wrong, not inappropriate. That's just the way it is. But there certainly isn't much IC land around. The location itself is well-suited for the IC zone. It's on a corner. It fronts on Wilco Road. Of course, a major thoroughfare also has frontage on Pacific Court, which is a fully improved street that serves the industrial area to the east of Wilco Road. And the types of uses that are anticipated for this property are real similar to the surrounding uses. The State and Builders Mart, which is a retail use, is across Pacific Court to the south. There are various types of storage activities, self-storage, contractor spaces, and other industrial services, trade services, and so forth, located along Pacific Court to the east. So overall, we see this as a minor change in the zoning pattern in this area. It will simply go from IL to IC while remaining within the industrial land category. And I'll close my testimony with that. I should say that all of the necessary criteria and policies have been addressed in the application that was filed for this. And so this summary, I won't go any further into those details, but happy to answer any questions. So thank you a lot.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Staff report. Dan?
Yeah, thank you. So again, the application before you is to change the zoning from light industrial to industrial commercial. I want to clarify one of the comments that Jeff just made about the inventory of land in those two different zones. The acreage that he was referring to is not the total acreage zoned in these zones, but the amount of vacant available land in these zones. We have substantially more than 80 acres of land zoned light industrial, but we have about 80 acres of vacant land in the city limits zone that way today. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this application at their February meeting and has unanimously recommended to you that you hold tonight's hearing and approve the application. My staff report to you that's in the packet has a list of the uses that would be permitted on this property should the zoning, should the application be approved, and also a list of uses that would no longer be permitted if it was not in the light industrial. I want the list of uses permitted in the industrial commercial, but not the light industrial. They're long enough. I'm not going to go through them tonight. But I will just point out that the list of uses that would no longer be permitted on this property are all uses that are extremely unlikely to be located at this location or on a site that's only about three acres in size. The other, the other point I will make is, as Jeff said in his remarks, the uses that are permitted, that would be permitted with the zone change that are not permitted today are similar to the surrounding uses. And in fact, as I was having a conversation with the owner of one of the neighboring properties, he said that he just realized that after being there for 40 years or so, that his use is a legally existing non-conforming use in that it predates the zoning. But State and Builders Mart is not a permitted use in the light industrial zone. So maybe in the bigger scheme of things, perhaps one day that that property should also be put into the industrial commercial zone since it's a use that's been there since the early 1980s or so. So with that, the packet includes a draft of ordinance 1049 with detailed findings in it that reflect the information that is in the application, as well as that was in the staff report to the Planning Commission. The recommendation from staff is to approve the application and the first consideration of ordinance 1049 as presented. And with that, I will end my testimony and be available to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fleishman. Dan, questions from the council? Anything at this point? How about public testimony? Is there any?
Staff has not been contacted by anyone indicating that they would like to participate in this hearing, and there was no public testimony at the Planning Commission's hearing.
Okay, all right. Let's move along. Questions from the public? Did we do that?
Well.
Same thing?
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions from the council? African summary. Mr. Tros? Jeff?
There we go. I think the staff report speaks for itself, and we've covered the issues. I do want to thank Dan. Always a pleasure to work with Dan and the city of Stateon. Very helpful, highly professional, good place to have a working relationship. Other than that, I think the application is straightforward. This is a good place for this type of zoning. It doesn't affect the city's land use inventory in any way. And I think that's about it.
Okay. All right. Thank you again. Let's see. Dan, anything else?
I don't have anything to add. Just again, the recommendation from staff and from the Planning Commission is to approve the application. You've got a draft ordinance in front of you. Your options are to approve the application and the first consideration of the ordinance as presented, to approve the application and somehow amend the ordinance or to deny the application and direct staff to prepare findings to support that decision.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, council deliberation. Oh, and close the hearing. Hearing's closed. So council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Hook, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Counselor Hook, and I just wanted to say that I really appreciated the way that the entire issue was presented to us. It was, once again, very clear, gave a lot of information. I really appreciated the uses being put down in there so that we could clearly see, you know, what could go there. And with what has been presented, I am in favor of voting yes on this.
Okay. That is one. All right. Somebody else? If there aren't any other questions under this, would somebody like to offer some kind of council decision?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty. I motioned that we approve the application, the first consideration of ordinance 1049.
Okay. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Hook, and I second that.
All right. I've had a motion and a second then to approve the application and first consideration. I have a motion and a second then to approve the application and first consideration of ordinance ten forty-nine. I guess that's all I need to read there. Everyone understands that if it's a unanimous decision, it'll be enacted and presented for a signature. If it's not unanimous, it'll come back to the council at the second hearing on April fifth. So are we ready to vote?
Mr. Mayor, I think we have to have a discussion after.
Let's discuss. Go ahead, hon.
I don't have anything discussed. I just wanted to make sure that we followed the same, same rules as always.
All right.
I'm good.
Any other discussion? No? Any discussion at all? Okay, let's, let's go to the decision. Alyssa, would you poll the council on that first?
Sure.
First consideration of ordinance ten forty-nine.
Sure. Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
And Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes five to zero.
So it will be presented for a signature. Let's see. Something else? A lot of stuff to read tonight. Okay, here we go. "The council's decision may be appealed within twenty-one days of the mailing of the notice of decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals under the Oregon Revised Statutes one nine seven point eight oh five dash eight five five." Okay, done with that.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah. Thank you, Jeff. And we'll move along into another public hearing regarding the disposal surplus property. And let's see, there's another, another reading. And here that is, so. Okay. Good evening. Again, my name is Henry Porter. As mayor, I'll be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place for the public hearing in a matter of proposed sale of city-owned property that the city council has declared as surplus. The hearing is now open. At this time, I would ask staff if they received any objections from the public to the notice for this hearing. No? I hear none. Did staff receive any objections to the jurisdiction of this body to hold this hearing? I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or bias by any members of this body? I hear none. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and address for the record. We're now ready for the staff report. Mr. Fleischman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You may recall that, not this past fall, but a year ago, fall of two thousand nineteen, staff and council worked together to, to review the city's inventory of city-owned property. We identified some properties that staff could not determine any potential future use for. And in February of two thousand twenty, the council adopted a resolution that declared some property surplus, directed staff to schedule a public hearing, which is required by law prior to our going out and trying to solicit bids for the surplus property. That hearing was scheduled for a year ago from tomorrow night. But between the February meeting and the March sixteenth meeting, the world kind of went topsy-turvy. And here we are on Zoom and finally getting around to holding this hearing as, as we've now accepted our new reality of how to hold hearings, et cetera. So hopefully, yes, the keyboard works. As I said, through Resolution nine ninety-nine, the city council has declared these two parcels as surplus and directed they be sold by bid. Statute requires this hearing to be held prior to the sale of surplus property. The two pieces of property, one is a parcel of land at the south end of North Oak Ave, on the east side of the road, illustrated here, outlined in, I guess that's blue. It is thirty-six feet by a hundred and twenty-five feet, which is about one-tenth of an acre. Somehow, back in nineteen eighty-nine, the city obtained this property from Marion County. And the assessor's real market value was estimated at about forty-five hundred dollars. The second piece is even smaller, at the end of North Burkjav, south of Ida Street. It is illustrated better here. It is twenty feet by fifty-five feet, which is about two one-hundredths of an acre. From what we can tell in, in the records, it was obtained in nineteen seventy-nine, supposedly for some possible future extension of North Burkjav. Here it is forty-plus years later, and nobody has any plans to extend North Burkjav. The assessor estimates its real market value at about a thousand dollars. That is the, the presentation that I have for you.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Dan, were, were there any? Well, questions from the council at this point? Does everyone remember a year ago when we went through all this and thought we were at this point? And then it didn't, didn't, didn't happen. So we're back to this, but that's, that's all right. We should be pretty familiar with the situation. Are there any questions from the council at this point? If not, Dan, was there any public testimony?
I, I received nothing, and I believe that Alyssa has not received any contact from anybody.
Okay. All right. Thank you. How about questions from the council? Lots of good pictures on this, so it's pretty easy to see where these things are. And good visuals, Dan. Thank you. Questions from the council? Anything? If not, then to a staff summary?
I don't really have anything else to add. You've got three options presented to you, which is first, to direct staff to proceed with the sale of both properties. Secondly, to direct us to proceed with the sale of only one of them. Obviously, you would need to let us know which one that is. Or thirdly, to direct us not to sell either of them.
Wow, okay. All right. Well, let me close the hearing and go to counsel deliberation on this. What would you folks like to do?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Hook.
Counselor Hook here, and I am perfectly comfortable moving to a motion.
Okay. And why don't we, why don't we do that? Let's see. Disposal of public property. Okay. All right. So we can do whatever.
Right. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to move to direct staff to proceed with the sale of both, both properties.
Okay, good. All right, and a second. All right, thank you, Dan. I mean, Bob, excuse me. I had to look for the, what the options were there. So, okay. A motion and a second to dispose of both properties, under discussion. Looked like a workable situation. All right, let's go to, let's go to a vote. Alyssa, would you poll the council on that question, please?
Sure. Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
And Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes five to zero.
All right. Thank you, folks. Good job. Let's, not just rushing through this, but moving along under general business, community improvement grants. Dan, back to you.
Yes, back to me. I didn't, I didn't realize till I opened up the agenda in preparation for the meeting this evening that this was going to be my night tonight. So you will recall that two weeks ago, we brought to you the question of whether you wanted us to proceed with the scoring of the community improvement grant applications. And at that time, the council chose to direct us to, to do so. So with that, the two applications that the city had received were, were independently scored by four different department heads. There were five criteria for approval, how realistic the budget is in the application, to what extent the project promotes the livability of the neighborhood, the level of benefit to state and residents, that the grant or the program being funded is not an ordinary part of the operations of the organization. And finally, to what extent the application provided a match to the city's grant. The, the, each of the four scores that were, were presented were, were added up, and, and the average score for each of the two applications is presented to you in the staff report. The application for holiday lights from Revitalize Downtown State and scored fifty-six out of a possible hundred points. The bicycle rack application from Downtown Merchants scored an average of fifty. You've got in your packet copies of each of those applications. Staff continues to recommend that the council not proceed with funding these applications due to the city's financial condition and that neither of them are serving essential governmental service. Or so with that, I will answer any questions that you may have. And.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Dan, do you have any, can you give us any insight to? I mean, I see the average scores and whatnot, but is there any insight to like what you all were thinking or what went into the scoring of these two projects? And?
We didn't really have any discussion. I sent the project, the applications out with a spreadsheet to the other staff members who were doing the scoring. I got their scores back. I, I would say some of us were easier scorers than others because there was a range. You know, some of them, I, I would say that the, the, the spread between the two applications was probably fairly similar as what you see here reflected in the average scores. Just some of us scored them higher and others scored them lower. You can see that, that the, one of the applications does not include any match at all. So obviously, they got, all of the scorers gave them zero points for that. And with the other, the other application received a good percentage of the ten possible points for match.
Somebody else? Good question, good.
Mr. Mayor?
That's a tough one. Yes, go ahead, please.
This is Counselor Hook. Dan, I was just curious if you happen to remember, and I was trying to look it up, know what some of the other applications in the past have gotten. I think we had some last year, what the points were for those ones.
I, I did not look it up. And, and I, I would, would not even begin to hazard a guess as to how well they scored. I will say that last year, which was really the first year that this program existed as it is, the application package itself did not inform the applicants of what the scoring criteria were going to be. Because it was a new program, we kind of didn't develop the, the scoring criteria until after the application package went out. So therefore, not all of them did a real good job of addressing the criteria because they didn't know what the criteria were last year. This year, the criteria were, and the amount of points that each was worth was part of the application package.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Dan? I'm sorry, I was trying to read through it again because I just noticed. So the, for the bike rack request, there, so it says their total grant amount is twenty-nine hundred, and then their total budget is twenty-nine hundred.
Oh, yes, that's a, I see that. That's a typo in the.
Okay.
In the staff report.
Thank you. So it, so their, their total budget should be twenty-nine hundred?
Twenty-nine hundred, yes.
And then a follow-up question to that? Okay, so I get what you're saying about the match grants that they, there's a score for that. Is the expectation for something like this, so if they had a total of twenty-nine hundred dollars that they were looking for, for the, so that they need, that they need twenty-nine hundred dollars for this project? Is the assumption there that then they should be trying to go out and find matching money for that? So then maybe they shouldn't be asking for the whole amount? Or like, should they only be asking for two thousand? But, and then asking for like a matching grant of nine hundred? Or I'm, I'm just trying to get an idea of, like, the expectation there. Are they, are we expecting them to, to find money somewhere else or not ask for the whole thing?
There is not a requirement that there be a match provided by the applicant.
Okay.
However, that, that was included in the scoring criteria as a way, if we had more applications than there was money available, how do, and all other things being equal?
Okay.
Then the match means you get more points.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Thoughts? This one, this one's provoking more thought than anything else this evening, which is good. But. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
You want to do it this? Ben? Alyssa?
Just one question. In the, in the event that we go ahead and, and grant this money, what, since we have so few applicants and we are, we are under budget for this allocation, what is, happens to the leftover money? Does that go back in general fund or does that hold over till next year? What do we do with that?
It would be whatever the proper accounting term is, what I recall, unexpended, un, unexpended surplus at the end of the year and would be part of the city's beginning fund balance in next year. So we don't hold over line items, but it becomes just part of the city's beginning fund balance. And Finance Director can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Unappropriate, no?
If I unmute? Yeah, so.
Yeah, so unused, the, the funds that are not, Dan's correct, the funds that are not used go to the ending fund balance, which starts our next year for beginning fund balance. And those are the things that we drive for meeting policy and that kind of stuff that I've talked about. But also take consideration that I'm in the process of still trimming down the budget and bringing down revenues where they need to be. And I'm reducing the general fund revenue by over two-hundred-thousand dollars. You'll be seeing the budget changes that will present to the Budget Committee at the end of this month. And you're bringing the revisions for you guys to approve in April. So you need to keep that in mind when you're deciding what's priorities for where money, every penny should be spent right now.
Mayor?
All right, yes, go ahead.
Um, I have a question for Dan. It's sort of a two-part question. The first one is, what is the total possible points? Because I, I did pull up the total points that we had from the last time that we talked about this. And it looks like they were in like the three sixty to one eighty-one range. Um, yes, so I don't know if that was combined total or you averaged it this time or not?
Yes, now, now I remember looking at last year's staff report. So last year, we took the, each scorers, scores and added them all up and compared the total. Whereas this year, I averaged them.
Okay. So this would be a, how many people were voting?
There were four.
Scoring?
There, there were four people doing the scoring.
Okay, all right. So we're still looking at a range of around two-hundred, which is far below the three, three sixty, three twenty-seven, two eighty, two seventy-six, two twenty scores that the top five got out of seven last time around. So my quest, my, my, my second part of the question is, am I understanding correctly that we really don't have the money right now for this? And this might be for Susanna, actually.
There she is.
All right, come, sorry. My mouse is not cooperating. Um, I would strongly suggest that we do not spend the money on stringy lights and even though, and bike racks when we're looking at making sure we have enough for operating supplies and necessities for the police department, the courts, the admin department, planning, community center and those kind of things.
Thank you.
The, 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 like I said in my, my quarter, half-year update, the staff has worked really hard to reduce every possible expense. And we've held back capital projects and everything that are important for the city to, just to make sure we get necessities done. So we really want to look at what is a necessity and what is most important right now to keep the essential services going so that the city is, is, you know, getting the needs met for the community as a whole.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Ort.
I just, I guess this is, I don't think this is a question per se for Dan, but this is just kind of a question out there because you weren't the one that was scoring them, Dan. But are the, are they? Because what Counselor Hook said was these scores, even though they're averaged out, are significantly less than the projects that we had come forward last year. So I'm wondering if that kind of thought process that we don't have the money to do this is, was impacting the scores that we got? Because I'm looking at this and it talks about promoting livability in a neighborhood. I mean, bike racks to entice people to raise their bikes places. And then we actually have a lot of bike trails and we have a lot of bike cyclists that come to Stateon. So I could see that only as a positive. So I'm just kind of going down this list and then benefit to state and residents. Whereas some of those projects that we had last year really only benefited potentially like the community that live in there, like these could benefit the entire community. So I guess my thought process would be like, is, is that kind of swaying these, this scoring?
So city.
I'm gonna, I'm just putting that out into the universe. That's not really like, I'm not expecting Dan to necessarily answer that question. I just kind of, that's just kind of the feeling that I'm getting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yes.
So I, I feel like I can sort of address this a little bit because I'm, I'm looking at the scores here from the February, let's see, um, February of 2020 meeting. I can't see what date it was. I think it was the third, maybe. Um, and it's a total of, so there's four people scoring. That's a total of four hundred points. When you're looking at the realistic budget portion of it, that's twenty points right there. The, and then the project is not part of ordinary operations of organization. That's another twenty points. So if you look at the top three from that agenda, the Sylvan Springs project had three-hundred-and-sixty points. That's ninety, they got ninety points basically on, on average. And then West Town got three-hundred-and-twenty-seven and then the third place one got two-eighty, which is an average of seventy points. So we're, those top three ones from the last time around, they were significantly higher. And considering just those two categories, which really do impact, you know, where we are in our, our budget right now for the city, it makes sense that that would be an impact. And that's a forty-point difference right there. So it seems very realistic that that would be considered and that would be a significant factor and not like a bias thing.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty. Oh, go ahead.
I'd interject something here.
Yeah, I just had a question for Susanna when she's finished answering Counselor Hook's question.
Could I interject something? David?
Sure. It's your meeting.
Counselor Hook, what conclusion did you draw from those last statements?
So that, yeah, thank you. The conclusion that I am drawing from this is that the, the, the way, where we are in our budget right now should have a huge impact just based off of the metrics that have already been set for the scoring. And there's two of the four categories that, that the budget would make a significant impact in the scoring. And it would make sense that it would do so. The other two categories are promotes livability of a neighborhood and benefit state and residents, which equal about sixty points. So when you look at these scores, they, they probably, I, I don't see the scores myself, but I would guess that they got heavily scored in those, those two categories. But the other two that make up that forty points, they were probably scored lower or zero just for the fact that, look at where we're at in our budget. I personally think that they're great projects. I don't know if they're for right now.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. David, you have a question or a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Susanna, I had a question. You mentioned that this may be cost prohibitive as we go forward, trying to, I don't know, fund other essential services for supplies and things like that. I feel like it may be helpful for not only council, but the applicants to understand things that we stand to lose by funding these projects. Could you help us out with that? Can you give us some examples of things that would be cost prohibitive by granting these projects?
Oh, okay. And I would like to respond to Counselor Ort's statement, though. From the council, from the staff perspective, the scoring, we look at them very open-mindedly and score them accordingly. For example, the lights did not have any future budgets on how to take them down, how to put them up in future years, how to deal when light bulbs go out. They didn't have any planning for that. There was not communication with the city prior about us installing the bike racks. So there was no pre-set up and what, and not asking us what that was going to cost in our staff time for installing that. So all of those things were factors involved in our scoring. So there is no, so the scoring was done by really just looking at the facts of the applications. So let me put that to rest to help you with that statement, okay? We're looking at, and the things that we're reducing right now, we have over forty-thousand dollars that I have going to bring forward to reduce for the police department. And that includes operations and cutting back custodial needs. That includes cutting back, I'm just sitting here looking at it too. Look, cutting back on some of their IT services that they may need. We're looking at those kind of things, cutting back on some supplies. We're trimming back supplies and some training in, in the admin department right now. We're trimming back on ordinance support at this point in planning and contracts. We're doing other things for the community in planning. Trimming back on some of the other costs for the community center, for maintenance and repairs. We do have an increase plan there because the HVAC system got replaced. So those are the kinds of things that we are in the process of reducing in the general fund.
So if I'm hearing you right, Susanna, it sounds like that's going to diminish the quality of police services we get as a community to fund projects like these. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions or thoughts here?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Counselor Hook here. I think this question might be for Dan. I'm wondering, is there a way that if the applicant, if we decide not to go forward with this as a council, is there a way that these applications could then be forwarded on to the next time that we do open it up if the applicants want, where they don't have to resubmit everything? With also the option that they could if they wanted to improve some of the, the information?
Uh, well, yeah, I guess that option is there. They would need to choose, to decide whether there's still the matching funds available a year from now that, that they were counting on now. Obviously, they would need to reprice their supplies and things like that. I mean, I guess we, we, we would deal with that issue this fall, assuming that next year's budget includes a, the community improvement grant program in it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Counselor Hook, good job. Anything else this evening on this or shall we try to make a decision? What would you folks like to do? Have we explored all the possibilities on this?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
A comment that I would like to make is, and we need to figure out how, we need to like come back together as a council, go over like our council goals and whatnot. And I know that we've talked about that before and what's that going to look like? But I think we really need to do that so we can kind of like get a little bit more focused on what those are. Because part of our goals are like livability in Stateon. And we're trying to, you know, make Stateon a welcoming place for people to live, work and play. And, you know, we have a lot of things that we're, we're kind of cutting out. And I did this just a, a general comment. But, you know, we're, I don't know, we're, we're talking about like, we're in dire straits with our levies, we're in dire straits with our budget. And, you know, we're, I don't know, I just feel like we need to like do that so we can kind of figure out where, where we want our focus to be. It's hard to make these decisions when we haven't really been able to do that.
Yeah? All right. Mayor? Somebody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen here. So, you know, this is tough. Fiscal responsibility is tough. It's part, it's a difficult part of our jobs, to be sure. But we have to be responsible. If we're talking about the, the, the impact against critical systems, public safety, et cetera, it makes it a little bit easier to make this decision. My neighborhood has worked really hard to get that back path along the wetlands, keep that going. And, and, you know, I've, I've removed myself from the vote almost every year because my neighborhood has submitted a submission for this. And so it's, it, it is hard to Counselor Ort's comments, but it's, it's necessary. And as such, you know, I would, I would move to suspend the grant program as recommended by staff. And hopefully, next year, we can get back up and, and dust ourselves off and, and do it again.
This is Counselor Patty. I second that motion.
I've got a motion and a second to suspend the grant program as recommended. For fiscal twenty-twenty-one and not fund either application. So under discussion, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I think that I just wanted to make sure that it was really clear that I do support the applications that were put forward. I think that, you know, they, they could use a little bit more detail, like Susanna had, had, I think Susanna had mentioned that there were some things that weren't, weren't there that would have been helpful for ongoing maintenance. But I, I do think that, you know, one of our, I do know, one of, one of our goals is that livability portion of Stateon. It's, my, my vote tonight is going to be yes on the suspension and of this grant program for this year. And that is because of where we're at financially as a city. We had a really robust discussion at our last council meeting of where we are at, at a city, as a city, and it was very impactful to me. And this sense of urgency of, of cutting some of the spending and being a lot more careful. I know we're always careful, but being a lot more careful and frugal with our money, I think, is, is even more at the forefront of my mind now. So it's not that I don't want our city, city to be more livable, but we have, you know, levies up or that are coming up here that, you know, we don't know if they're going to pass or not. I hope that they pass, but we don't know if they will. And that impacts our funding too. It's not just the police services. It's, there's a lot on the line right now. And so bike racks and, and lights are great, but probably not right this moment.
Okay, thank you. Other, other thoughts and comments under discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead. Mr. McDonald?
Um, I just wanted to echo Counselor Hook's comments. And I, just to add, I, it, it's, it's not quite as black and white to me as, as fiscal responsibility because I know that we get a lot of non-monetary value out of these, these community projects. There's a lot of just, you know, faith and, and buy-in from the community that's, that's bought with this, these dollars, you know, getting the community involved and having people know that we support them and support their concerns and support their projects is, is almost invaluable. And, you know, if, if, but if we weren't in such a dire area, you know, this amount of money to me is, would normally be not consequential in my eyes. So I definitely would encourage the applicants to, to reapply when it is offered again. I'd be happy to approve it at that time.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything else?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm on the same vein as Counselor McDonald. And that's why I'm going to be a yes vote to suspend this year. But I definitely would like to see our program move forward. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty. I just wanted to say to those who were willing to match some of these grant funds, I really appreciate that and I hope that offer will still be good when we do have the ability to disperse these funds to the groups that had applied for them. So thank you for being willing to do that.
Good, 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 thank you. Anything else? Well, let's go to vote. Alyssa, would you poll the council on this question?
Of course. Let's see, Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ort? She said yes, I just didn't hear you, but I saw it.
It's the spacebar, yes.
Okay. Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
And Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five to zero.
And I hope these folks do come back with, with these public service applications and another better time. Communications from City State. Is there anything?
No, nothing tonight, Mayor.
Nothing? Nothing tonight? Oh, okay. I would ask the council to affirm my appointment of Judy Mahoney, Judy Van Mahoney, Kay Mahoney, to the Public Arts Commission. These are coming in, uh, one or two a month. And, um, a very community-minded person and, um, an artist and lots and lots of, uh, of, uh, what, abilities and experiences spread across, um, art boards in the area. So I'd like the council to affirm that appointment, please. And anytime.
Mr. Mayor, this is councillor Patty. I move that we affirm your appointment of Judy Mahoney to the Public Arts Commission.
Okay.
I second.
And thank you. And, uh, any discussion of that? Probably not, but, uh,
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, there's a question. Go ahead or a comment.
It's not a question, it's just a comment. I'm really excited to see, uh, uh, Judy Mahoney's name on here. I think she's going to be a wonderful addition to this, uh, committee. And I'm looking forward to seeing more people. I've heard from several people that we shouldn't have any problem, um, getting this committee filled. So I am waiting in anticipation for that.
I hope not. Turn here, Judy. Thank you. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Good person, yes.
I just wanted to echo what councillor Ort said and also just, uh, thank, um, everyone that, that is uh, volunteering on these committees, um, and, and getting this one up and running. Um, I think it's going to be really impactful for our community, especially, um, having it so in line with the council goals.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I can, go ahead and poll the council on this, please.
Sure.
Unless we do a show of hands, but we'd like these votes, so go ahead.
Sure. Councillor Ort?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Councillor Patty?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Councillor McDonald?
Yes.
And councillor Mullen?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
Well, it is, unless there's something else.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This councillor Patty again.
Yes, Mayor, yeah.
Oh, would you like to go first councillor Hook? Oh, okay. I wasn't sure who had the floor, to be honest with you. Okay. Uh, real quick, I just wanted to bring something up. I got notice from my neighbor, um, kind of some complaints about some of the burning within city limits. Um, I understand she already has spoken with Dan. Um, she did have an idea to kind of bring up some ordinance that Lincoln City had identified as something that worked for their community. And whereas I understand of the last year, there's been a lot of burning in the city for obvious reasons. There's been a lot of smoke. Um, this neighbor just kind of had a problem with the amount and kind of the pervasive nature of it. Uh, I think that I'd like to see staff kind of research the idea of this and maybe come back to us with an idea or maybe hear more from Dan if he has some information already offhand. Um, I, I haven't talked to him yet, so if he doesn't, that's okay too. And then also if anybody else on the council has been hearing a word about this or complain about this from other residents around them. Well, Dan, she's spoken to a resident. She, she states that she had spoken to you.
Yeah, yeah. I had a phone conversation with her and actually, um, what I learned, where she lived, I said, oh, you've got a councillor right in your neighborhood. You should, uh, give him a call because these are, this is something that would need to be decided by council.
Right.
Um, she, uh, we, we don't have anything that I'm aware of in the city code today that addresses it. There are rules and regulations that the State Fire District, uh, administers and enforces. Um, my past communications with them and actually, uh, as I was on the phone with your neighbor, I, I dug into my old emails, searching for stuff like that. It, and it was, it, I think it was like 2011 or 12 was the last time I had some type of conversation with the fire district. And essentially their response was, um, you know, they need to get a phone call at the time that the burn pile is happening or the, or the burn barrel or whatever's going on. They don't respond to emails. They can't respond to, well, this was happening last week. And, uh, you know, so that's, that's the best I can tell you at this point. If, if a majority of the council is interested in pursuing it, I can do some research into what other cities have done for these types of regulations and bring it back to you.
Yeah. And again, I've only heard from one person so far, but I wanted to check with other councillors if they've heard anything as far as complaints in the way of this kind of thing.
Okay.
So, um, I guess I'll hop on. Dave and I have been the chief, I'm sorry, the police chief and I have been having a quick conversation here.
Um, and, uh, you know, we've, you're Dan saying, you know, city ordinance, but I think, you know, this might be to the fire district.
What we do see here is Marion County Fire Defense Board has, um, outdoor bans that they help do that through Marion County. So I think what I'd be happy to do and what we'd be happy to do as a staff is to look into, um, you know, who is, you know, the current authority over that and then what additional authority we as a city have the options of doing or not doing, um, and whether that would file, file, fall under cooperation with the fire district or something we could do independently. But, um, I know in the past, the fire district has sort of said when burning can and can't, and, and like Dan had said, have asked people to reach out during those times. So I think it's just a matter of, of getting questions. Um, and, and yeah, DEQ might be another option to look at as well. So I think it's just going to be a matter of us doing some research on, um, sort of who is the authority over that? And then making sure that, um, we can bring whatever options are sort of needed or to advise people of what the best way forward is. I know with some of that wood being, uh, wet, uh, it definitely creates a lot of smoke. Uh, in fact, I ran near city hall thinking there was a fire and, and there was just somebody burning a small, small pile of wood. So, um, let's, let's, we'll happy to look into it and, and come back when we have some more answers and can get a richer conversation about it.
Thank you.
Councillor, it should be easy. There's a phone number that you can call. Every day they post whether there's, it's okay to burn outside or not. Uh, I wouldn't think you'd want to be burning in March or February. It's too wet.
Well, there's a lot of downwood, Mr. Mayor.
There is. I've got a bunch of it in my yard, but not, not burnable.
Uh, we, we can provide a line. I think, I think, you know, what the chief just said is, you know, I think the bigger issue is, is enforcement and, and sort of, um, making sure that we're firing, that we're following along with when uh, burning is allowed and that safe procedures are in, in place. I mean, I, I can give that number right now, but I think a bigger thing would be just to, to have a richer conversation to see what we can and can't do.
Thank you.
Hope for the smoke, yeah. Uh, is there anything else this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Um, this is councillor Hook and I, uh, just wanted to make sure that, um, I stated my clear support for, um, the levies that are coming up and encourage, um, the other councillors to, um, support the levy as well officially so that it can show up in the, um, the voter's pamphlet. Uh, I believe the last time that I spoke to someone, I, at that time was the only councillor so far that has signed an SEL 400 for those levies. But, um, I don't know that everyone was reached out to either, but just to let you guys know that those are going around and also encourage other, uh, community leaders and, uh, partners and stakeholders. We don't have to live within the city limits of Staton to, uh, voice your support. Um, and I just really encourage that because we, we really do need this, this funding for, for our services to, to, um, open back up and stay open.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, Mr. Mayor, this is councillor Patty again. Uh, I understand at least one councillor did not get that email, uh, from the individual who was kind of going around collecting those forms from everybody. So if anybody else didn't get it, uh, please let us know now and we can just forward it to you because I believe today was the last day that they were accepting the form.
Um, I can hop on here. Um, uh, again, as we as staff cannot, uh, promote or advocate, but we can educate. So what I can say is there is a political action committee, uh, keep Staton livable. Um, they're working to, um, collect those information from what I understand. They did set the deadline today trying to do that. There is a little bit more time for someone who hasn't done it. Um, but, uh, I would say reach out to myself, Lance, Jana, or, or, um, who am I missing? Susanna. I'm sorry, Susanna. Uh, we can get you the information for anybody who would want that, the contacts of, of those groups. So, um, but there is a group out there currently doing that and they are seeking anybody who would be willing to sign, uh, letters of support that, that form that councillor mentioned. Um, and so there is a little more time, but today was sort of the deadline, I think they set, just trying to make sure they had enough time to gather them all and then, and then get them submitted. But, um, we, I, I would encourage everyone who is to reach out to those folks who are, who are leading that effort.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I have one more comment on that.
Go ahead.
Um, if, if you are wanting to submit one of those forms right, right now, we don't have, um, a title for the levies or a, a measure number. So, um, don't be surprised if you get a form that, that is sort of blank there because, um, I think today was the, the final day for, um, the, the public notice that, that the city had to give, um, for that. And then now it goes on to the, um, election, Marion County elections where they will assign it a measure number. So, um, I just want to encourage people to still sign the form, even though we don't have official titles or measure numbers.
Okay. All right. Anything else from you, you folks?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
This is councillor, I have a couple of things.
Got to give it.
I wanted to, uh, thank councillor Patty for forwarding me that email because I never got it. So I have signed mine and scanned the back, scanned them and sent them in. And, okay, so I have received, um, correspondence from several different people in our area. So I'm going to pull up the email real quick. Um, and it is regarding, um, the, there's a potential concentrated animal feeding operation. Um, that is, I'm saying potentially because, um, right now there's, there's a lot of kind of talk about it. And I'm, the, the reason that people are reaching out to me and maybe some of you have gotten correspondence to as councillors is because even though it's outside of the city limits of this were to put into, um, operation, it could affect, um, our area in terms of our water. Water is a big issue. Um, and apparently, I'm going to say allegedly, the buyer has, um, requested to drill some wells and was denied that. Um, and so a big concern is how the, um, operator of this farm is going to, it's a chicken farm, is going to be able to operate without, um, water. Um, and then there's also, uh, childhood asthma issues that have been, uh, brought up from a, and these are from constituents. And again, even though they're outside of the city limits, the impact of these farms, the, uh, area of impact of these farms is going to cover the city of Staton. Um, so I just wanted to kind of put that on our radar. I don't know what we can do as a council specifically. And I see Keith is waiting for me to finish what I'm saying. Um, but this is something that I think that we should keep an eye on and even as, um, councillors to, um, contact this, the county, just to figure out the situation.
And I might ask Dan to hop on too, because Dan helped reach out. I'd be happy to share my email that Dan had helped navigate through to the county to ask about that. Um, I, I think in question, you had me confused at first, but it's, yeah, chicken farm outside of the city limits. Um, and, and kind of where that is in the process. And Dan, I've read that email, but I'm sorry, off the top of my head, I, I know it's, it's fairly earned in that process. What, what do you recall from that correspondence from about a week ago? And I will share it with the council. I'll go find it um, and just share it so you kind of know what the county's position is. But if I recall, it's still fairly early on in the process. Dan, what, I'm sorry to put you on the spot here, but.
No, no problem. I was going to jump on once, uh, it was appropriate. Uh, because I, I learned a little bit, I perhaps learned a little bit more today. The, the email correspondence that Keith is referring to, I was thinking it was more like two or three weeks ago already, but maybe it was only a week. Who knows? Time is, uh,
Flat circle.
Time, time is strange these days. Um, I had, I had started to get some phone calls. Uh, the first person, wh- when I first heard about it, sounded like something was being proposed in the city. So I of course said, no, that's not happening. Uh, then, then that individual got back to me and said, oh, it's like a, uh, um, a half mile outside of the urban growth boundary west of, on Shaft Road. And so I contacted Marion County Planning Department to find out whether they knew anything. Um, they did not at that time. Um, no applications had been filed, nothing had been approved. Um, and depending on the nature of the operation, because it is designated farmland, uh, what I, my recollection of what I was told, and we'll confirm that when we find these emails and forward it to them, them to you, is if it's just barns for raising chickens, then under the Marion County Code, it's just going and getting a building permit to build a barn. Uh, there is no land use process. If it was going to be something that processed chickens, uh, then they would need a land use approval. Uh, I got another phone call today. And it was, uh, from a woman who said she lives outside of Syo. And that sent me, and after saying, I don't, you know, again, it's outside of the city. It's outside of our urban growth boundary. The city of Staton wouldn't have any role to play. Uh, I got curious and did a little bit of internet searching. I did find, uh, oh, oh, she, I think she, I thought she had said she'd read something about it in our town. So I went to try to find our town online and there was nothing in the March issue. There was nothing that I could find in the, what's it called? The Canyon Weekly. Um, but I did find a Facebook post from, I think it was early February by a woman who is a, I recognize the name because she has a, uh, we, or used to have a weekly column in the newspaper down here in Corvallis, uh, that she's a former extension service agent and had a weekly gardening column um, saying that a, uh, chicken raising facility had been approved by Lynn County. Um, so it's, it's downriver from Staton. It's, um, west of Syo. Um, and that's, and, and if you, if you do enough Google search, you'll be able to find her Facebook posts, post also.
Mr. Mayor?
That's everything I know at this point.
Dan, uh, or council, try a mile east of Greensbridge on the Lynn County side.
Yeah, that, in that neighborhood.
Uh, Foster Farms.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, this is councillor Hook. Um, I, I like to be very transparent. I am in, uh, a Facebook group and, uh, intermittent, intermittently monitoring some of the discussion that's going on in there. Um, that has to do with, there are about four locations, I believe, here in Oregon where this, uh, these, these types of operations are, are attempting to go in and one of them is over in that Syo Jefferson area. One is, um, just near, uh, Porter Road and, uh, Shaft Road. Um, but, uh, what I do want to do is just, my, my role right here, how I'm approaching it is, um, trying to educate how to, if they want to get involved and, and voice their, their opinion for or against whatever. Um, there is a federal right to farm, uh, law. So, uh, you would need to contact, uh, your senator, your, our state senators, um, our, our congressman who is, um, uh, Kurt Schrader, Representative Kurt Schrader, and also, um, contact ours, our state reps, our state rep and our state senator. So that would be Senator Fred Gerard and, uh, Representative Jamie Kate. So, uh, this isn't a council, uh, issue where we're going to be making like decisions on it. Um, but it is close to home. And so, um, as, as a community member, I encourage people to voice however they feel, whether that's for or against, and do it through, um, some of those avenues and also our county commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Good.
If, if I may, it's, it's my understanding that these types of operations need some type of permit, license, whatever approval from the Oregon Department of Agriculture as well. Now, whether there's a public process to participate in that, I don't know. But, but that would be another avenue for concerned people to take a look into.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Hook. Um, I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the council because I've, um, gotten a couple of emails about it. So, thank you.
And, and I will also say, I, I was on the phone today with Marion County Planning Division for other business. And at the end said, oh, I just got another phone call, um, about Foster Farms and, um, and the planning director there said that they still don't know anything. So there, you know, there's nothing that's been submitted to Marion County for any type of approval.
Anything else?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, do you have one more thing?
Go ahead.
Um, so I, um, Jordan Lambert, who was on here earlier, um, he was, I, I just wanted to say I appreciate all the comments and people that have come on and support of all of our, um, services that we have, the Parks Pool and, um, Library. And I agree with, um, sorry, I'm kind of going back a little bit. I certainly agree with Amy. Um, I've said this lots of times over and over again, that those are the reasons that my family, um, love to be here in our community and they really do make Stateon a livable place. There's, there are reasons that people come to our community as well. And right now with those services, um, like Amy mentioned with the pool closed, people are having to go to other communities. And it's not just the pool. We have to think about it as, um, when someone comes in here to swim or they come to take their kid to the library, um, or they, um, go take family pictures at the, um, Pioneer Park at the bridge. Um, they come here and they will stop for lunch or they'll meet a friend here or they'll go gar, go groceries or they'll go grab gas. Um, I mean, these are, the, these things draw people to our community and then people spend money here. So it, it's important for us to remember that it's not just these services that people are using. It's the ripple effect of those services. And people from up the canyon are now going to Albany or they're going to Salem to go swimming. Um, and, and so that, that's just something that we need to consider with this stuff. We need a reason for people to come here and not just to live here, but, I mean, we want them to spend their money here too. Think about like our gas tax and, and everything, um, and what those serve, what the gas tax then provides for us and our community for our roads and whatnot. So it's really important. Um, but I think, I think even, even if Jordan Lambert's message was a little hard to hear, I think it's important because he's not the only one. And I have said this several times before that, um, you know, it can sometimes be a perception issue of, um, you know, what's happening as opposed to what the people think are happening as opposed to what is actually happening. So I think it's important for us to, as a council, to listen to that, um, because we know that this is short sighted, you know, with our, um, with the, with some of these services being, um, closed or limited, limited access anyway. We know that that's short sighted, but does the, the rest of the community, and are they going to vote that way thinking in the long term? Um, so with that being said, I think it'd be important to like talk about, you know, if the library isn't going to be open right now, but when is the library going to be open? Cause you brought up a good point, like there's no end in sight of when is this service? Or when, when is the full access, accessibility of this service going to be open to the community? We haven't even talked about that. It's not even a question that has come up. Um, people have talked about, well, when is the city council going to go back to in-person meetings? And we haven't even had a conversation about that. And I think it's important for us to have those conversations. So that the community knows what's going on and what we're thinking about.
I'll bet everyone echoes the things we've heard here about, we're going to open those facilities when it's safe to do so.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll bet none of us get on our computers or Facebook pages and sympathize with these people that says, say, why don't you? What's wrong with this? Why aren't you doing this? We should be saying when it's safe to do it.
Mr. Mayor.
Not inviting this negativity and revenge almost of, well, I'm not going to vote for that because you guys won't open that pool and that library.
Mr. Mayor, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm, I'm giving you reality here. You want to talk about like reality with our budget? You want to talk about reality with these things? I'm telling you what I'm hearing out in the community. So even if it's not something that you like, even if it's not something that I agree with, I'm bringing it to you because I feel like that's my job is to be a voice for these people. And so how do we, like, okay, let's have a conversation about it then. Let's like, talk about it. Let's, like, that's why I asked the questions. What would you say? How, how do you want me to respond to somebody who has this question? So I think it's important to have these conversations and I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I'm bringing to you how others in the, in the community are feeling and what they're saying. So how do we combat that?
Well, certainly it might not, it can be a sounding board, but I certainly hope that you're not encouraging that. That is, that's, that's the bottom line for me.
Mr. Mayor?
Um, that, I'm, I'm not, um, I.
I don't know why they don't open the library. I just don't know. You know, this kind of, this kind of sympathy for, uh, these counters.
Well, I don't know if that is directed, um, specifically at me. If you're, uh, making the assumption that that's what I'm doing.
No, I'm not.
Again, I'm just bringing this to your attention and obviously I, I feel like, okay, so we normally have, um, several people join our council meetings and it's actually kind of sad to not be able to see people, um, come to our meetings. And so that, that's a little sad to me because even though we know people are watching right now and they get to watch later, it's a different experience. Um, but so if, if you consider like, one person comes to a council meeting and, and says something like, how many people are actually feeling that way? And so for Jordan to come on and express that, I think it's important for us to listen to, even if that's not what we want to, again, I'm going to repeat this again, even if it's not what we want to hear. I think it's important to listen to because he's not the only person in the community and that feels that way. So when we, it's important for us to have these conversations.
Okay, agreed. Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Counselor Hook. Um, I, I wanted to share some of my thoughts on this. Um, and I, I want to thank Counselor Oort for bringing this up because I think it is really important to listen to community members regardless of whether we like what we hear or if it's comfortable to hear or whether they, um, are aware of, of, of all the services that are still going on. For example, um, you know, our library's doors might not be physically open, but, um, our library has outperformed, uh, similar libraries around the, the area. Um, time and time again during this pandemic and they actually, uh, checked out more books last month than the Salem Public Library. Um, so they will print things for you. There is extended wifi out in the, in the parking lot. Um, and, uh, there's, you can, they'll drop books off outside in a, in a bag for you. Um, there's all sorts of services, story time going on still over, over, uh, like a Zoom platform. There's a lot of things that are still going on and I think that maybe, um, maybe I, not maybe, I feel like I've sort of failed at, um, sharing that information and learning about all the things that are going on so that I could push that out to the community as well. Um, but these concerns are valid that people have, you know, it is hard to get someone to vote for something that they feel isn't open. Um, even if it is, you know, still functioning, I, I get that. So I don't think that we need to, need to say, hush, hush, don't, don't talk about it. I think that we need to educate and outreach more about this, which is, you know, why I'm getting more involved. And I know that there are other counselors that are getting more involved in promoting the levy too. And I know that every single one of us last meeting said that we wanted to help support and to outreach on this, whether they voted yes or no. Um, there, i- if you, if you fast forward to the end of the last meeting, the one counselor that voted, uh, no, explained their vote very well as to why they were voting a certain way and expressed that they were still going to be supporting, um, the outreach for that. So, um, we also need to remember that, um, with all the vaccinations that are going out right now, um, we're, we're really close to things going back to a lot more normal and seeing a lot more of, 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 uh, a shift to opening things up. So this is sort of a, a very, um, limited, uh, issue right now. Um, and I would invite more conversation as to, you know, what, what can we do to get us back in person? What can we get? And I've actually, you know, talked to the city manager about, um, you know, what would it take to get us back open? And, you know, he discussed even having maybe an IT person come and tell us, uh, how much that would cost to get us, get us there. So, um, I, I really just want to, want to say that I, that I support what Counselor Oort said and I'm glad that she is advocating for these voices, um, because we do need to hear this stuff. Um, but we also need to make sure that when we're, when we're speaking that we're, we're, uh, expressing what is happening too, like what is open. And I'm really proud of our library for all that they have done. Um, I do wish our pool was open, but I don't, I don't see pools open right now. Um, there's just some things that we are, we are, our hands are tied and we can't do. And I know there are some libraries that are starting to open, but the browsing, it's just not, it's not probably feasible for our library because we already had to cut staff. I mean, we just learned that, you know, they had to cut positions at the library. Um, and they've got limited space that they can, that they can operate in with their quarantine that they do for four days for all the books. Um, there's just a lot that's going on that maybe the, the, the community members don't know about and maybe even us as counselors don't know about.
Good job. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, good.
To piggyback on what Counselor, uh, Counselor Hook was saying and, um, what you were talking about as responses when people say things like that. I just picked up, um, an, an audio book from a kid's at the library last week and, um, I missed the deadline for the make and takes, but this month, but I've gotten them in the past. So there are lots of, and those are the things that I talk about with people is that you still can get your books. They're still available. Um, you can't go into the biz, to the building physically, but you can still access the resources. And Jen and I have talked about that before. And there is a, um, a graphic that, I can't remember if the city of Stateon put it out or that the, uh, library put out, was it you guys that put out that talked about what Counselor Hook was saying on, uh, the resources that were going out to people. Um, and if you don't have the Libby app for audiobooks, you need to get it because that is an awesome one to have.
Okay, good job.
Mr. Mayor, can I pop into?
Sure.
I really appreciate your guys' feedback and especially, um, that was pretty devastating to hear that library staff have had the year off because in a really challenging year, the innovation and the ability of our staff to adapt and, um, serve at the level that we're serving is inspiring. And that's a really, um, sad rumor to hear that is out there. But I was going to add to, um, both Counselor Oort and Counselor Hook's, um, message to the community, which I really appreciate, is that we are monitoring the situation around reopening and what we can provide curbside right now far exceeds what we could do in the limited operating sense that we would be allowed to do right now. And nobody is more excited for us for that prospect to change because curbside is really hard and it's really staff intensive. And to do appointments every 10 minutes is totally crazy. Um, but we're watching that real close and what we could do limited would serve so much less of our community than what we can do curbside, especially at the level that we've been able to do curbside, which is pretty great. So I just want to assure you that I'm monitoring that. We want that to change too. But the limitations that would be right now just would really limit the amount of our community we can serve. And that's the most important thing to us.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Jana.
Go ahead.
Um, is it, it's my understanding and, and I'm just wondering if I'm correct. Am I correct in understanding that you guys even have like, uh, like Plexiglas type stuff ready to go for when you guys can open up? Like you guys are, are really working to be ready when you're able to.
Correct. We've been working on that the whole time. There's equipment that we've moved and things that we're doing to be ready because we want to be open too. Right? And we want to be, we don't want to be like, oh, we can do it now, but it's going to take us a month to get ready. Right? We want to be ready. So you're correct.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Jana.
Chris?
I just said, thank you, Jana.
Oh, truly. She's doing a wonderful job. You bet. Anything else this evening? We could reflect on the murder of a man 2,100 years ago that ruined the Roman Republic. Absolutely ruined it. A system that had been in working for about 400 years then had done away with kings, had gone to a, um, a republic. And the murder of one man on this day almost 2,100 years ago absolutely ruined that. It turned into an empire. Hmm. Okay. Well, reflection on that. Is there anything else? If not, let's go home. Thank you, folks. Good job tonight. Another time.